All right. Good evening. This is...
Recording in progress.
...a meeting in City Council, City of Louisville, Thursday, September 16th. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Sorry, that was me.
Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Fahey.
Here.
Mayor Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton. Councilmember Kern.
Okay. Everybody is here. Let's please rise and see this. All right. Our first item tonight is an executive session regarding real property acquisitions and dispositions. City manager is requesting City Council convene an executive session for the purpose of real property acquisitions and dispositions concerning property in Lewis properties in Louisville only as to appraisals and other value estimates and strategy.
Thank you, Mayor. As noted on the meeting agenda, the city manager is requesting an executive session for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions pursuant to Section 5-2(c) of the Home Rule Charter and CRS Section 2464024a specifically as to appraisals and other value estimates and strategy. Prior to entertaining any motion, the interim city clerk will read the statement required by the city code.
It is the policy of the city to conduct public business and meetings open to the public. While in executive session, it is inappropriate to take straw votes, keep minutes, or to make any final decisions. It is the duty of each member to ensure that executive sessions are conducted in strict compliance with this ordinance, state, and federal law, and any applicable provisions of the state and federal constitutions. If at any time the scope, nature, or parameter of this executive session goes beyond the publicly stated topic, it is the responsibility of the council to terminate and cease any further deliberation within the executive session and return to the public meeting. Only those topics described in city ordinances may be discussed in an executive session. Those topics are summarized as follows. One, where federal or state law requires that the information being discussed remain confidential. Two, certain personnel matters involving only employees directly appointed by the city council and other personnel matters upon request of the city manager or mayor. Three, consideration of water rights and real property acquisitions and dispositions, but only as to appraisals, value estimates, and strategy. Four, legal consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation.
Regarding the authority for the executive session, Section 5-2(c) authorizes an executive session for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions, but only as to appraisals and other estimates of value and strategy. An executive session for this purpose is also authorized by the Open Meetings Law, Section 2464024a of the Colorado Revised Statutes. The request involves acquisition and disposition of real property. With that, Mayor, you may entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions. And that the executive session also includes City Manager Daniel Langley, Deputy City Manager Samantha Fox, Community Development Director Rob Zaccaro, and City Attorney Kathleen Kelly.
Second.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Yes.
Mayor Lay.
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Yes.
All right. So we'll convene an executive session momentarily, or adjourn and then convene. There'll be a sign up indicating that we'll be back as soon as we can, and we will start our next, our regular meeting, or resume the regular meeting no earlier than 6:00 p.m. Thanks. All right. We just finished with an executive session about 12 minutes ago, and we're ready to resume the rest of our meeting. And we start with a report by the, uh, our city attorney. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. No.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate that.
Mayor and council, as noted on the meeting agenda, the executive session was for the purpose of discussing real property acquisition and disposition, and the city council had such discussion. In follow-up to the executive session, we request that council give staff direction to negotiate a purchase and sale contract, which will come back to city council on a future agenda. And so moved would work for that direction.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next item is approval of tonight's agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The next item is public comments on items not on the agenda and items on the consent All right. agenda. Only items not on the agenda and items consent agenda. Please tell us your name, and if you're a Louisville resident, when you come up, and when the, that is when the clerk calls your name. Each speaker is limited to three minutes or six minutes. If you are pooling time with one or more people who are in attendance, either here in the room and can confirm that, or online and can confirm that. All opinions are welcome. Please be respectful of each speaker to ensure everyone feels welcome to share their comments. Please refrain from any cheering, clapping, booing, or otherwise disruptive behavior. All right. So we, do we have a motion concerning, excuse me. Do we have anybody?
Yes.
Wanting to speak? Sorry.
First up is Terri Barr, followed by Aubrey DeBarros. Audrey. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Members of City Council and City Manager Langley. My name is Audrey DeBarros. Members of city council and city manager Lansley, my name is Audrey DeBarros. I am a Louisville resident, but I am also the Executive Director of Commuting Solutions. We are the transportation management organization for the Northwest Metro Region, and we have been a partner with the city of Louisville and all the local jurisdictions in this Northwest region to advance regional transportation improvements, planning, and advocacy, as well as inspiring commute behavior change among the traveling public and with employers. And I'm really excited to be here tonight to let you know that Commuting Solutions has been selected to be the Transportation Demand Management Coordinator for the Redtail Ridge Metro District. And in this role, we will work to ensure that TDM strategies are effectively deployed and that we achieve the 25% travel reduction goal that's outlined in the 2024 TDM plan that was part of the Metro District approval. The plan was approved in '24, and the Redtail Ridge TDM plan includes several forward-thinking recommendations, one being the creation of brand-new shuttle that will take visitors of Redtail Ridge and employees from the community to the U.S. 36 bus rapid transit stations. It will also provide Redtail Ridge employees with RTD eco passes to really inspire that use of transit. And as the coordinator, we will work with city staff to evaluate TD plant, TDM plans that will be required as part of the development review and approval process, and working to collaborate with the end-users in creating commute options programs for those visitors and employees. Last week, we had the opportunity to begin a stakeholder process with city staff and local jurisdictions to just start conversations about the shuttle and are discussing getting going as soon as 2027 to align with land use changes coming to the research, that area. So we're really looking forward to partnering with you and city staff and local adjacent communities to expand the travel options available to those working and visiting Redtail Ridge. And as always, I really wanted to thank you for your service to the city of Louisville. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Audrey.
Next up is Teri Barr.
Thank you. Apologize, I missed my call earlier. I want to talk to the council about the distribution of Ward 1 in this city. And to give some background to this discussion, in January 2022, the Boulder County approved a distribution of precincts within Boulder County. This distribution was generated by an independent electoral body, and that independence, I think, is very important. In February of 2022, this council, or the council in place at that time, approved a ward distribution, which was not consistent with the precincts that were approved by Boulder County. And I understand just by inference that this was done, this motion was carried under the Home Charter provision of Louisville County, however, Louisville City, however, that charter actually dictates that the Colorado statutes be obeyed, if you like, or adhere to unless there are good reason to do, to not to do so. And I want to quote the Colorado statute for you. It's Section 3110-502, and it says, "In municipalities having wards, no precinct or part thereof shall be located within more than one ward." So in other words, the ward boundaries must follow the precinct boundaries. And of course, precincts 208, 209, and 212 all cross the ward boundaries in more than, in three occasions. So basically, the statute that set out the process was avoided, I guess is the best way to put it. And at the time of that resolution being reached, no one brought forward an argument to accept the breach of Colorado statutes. So as a result of that, some of the votes, the votes in Ward 1, that should be, are counted in Ward 1, actually should rest in Ward 2 and vice versa. So basically, there's a mismatch between precincts and wards. And there's a couple of practical considerations here. Firstly, the city has to alert Boulder County, "Well, you need to count these electors in 20212 because they're not in your record, and you need to count these electors in 206 because they're not in your precinct record."
Teri, I apologize, your time's up.
Sorry?
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anybody else? Just one thing, and I should have said that at the beginning, because these items are not on the agenda, and everybody spoke appropriately, you know, in that part of the meeting, we can't respond from here. Just important to note that. All right, so do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Move we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next item is council informational comments and committee reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have actually two things that I wanted to just briefly mention this evening. One was I was at the latest Colorado Municipal League District meeting, and it went very well. They're really looking very closely at what's coming down from the state in some ways because of what's coming down from the federal government, but they're very much aligned with us in maintaining municipal control wherever possible. So you can be reassured that CML is working with us, or we are working with them. The other thing is that three of our council members did a tour of the Rocky Mountain Airport on Saturday and got to meet some of the staff at the airport, some of the staff at one of the flight schools. And it was very informative to see what they do, how they do it, why they make the decisions they make about things. A lot of the issues that we're having with overflights is because the FAA is allowing it, and they can't force the pilots to not fly here or there or wherever, but they are trying. And the flight schools in particular are making a great effort to divert the planes so that they go over open space instead of over the cities. So we're hoping that things get changed, and I hope it goes more quickly than they're saying, but that's all.
Thanks. Others? Any reports? Next is the city manager's report.
Thank you. Good evening. So September is Preparedness Month, and we will have a firewise landscaping workshop on October 9th at the Recreation Center from 6:30 to 8:00. Also, we have new outdoor warning signals, sirens that have been installed. They will be tested system-wide later this week. I heard them last week inside City Hall at my office, which before, I don't think you could hear them, so they're much louder. Also, we have the vintage baseball game this Saturday at 11:00 a.m., and council will have a booth at the farmer's market this Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Thank you.
Next item, moving to regular business, I'm gonna start this discussion. I don't usually do that, but I'm a big believer in experimentation, and so give me a little room here. Council has been hearing from residents and businesses about the South Street Underpass, a lot. Some of you, I think, who are here tonight are here because of that item, and it's an item that a lot of people have some concerns about whether they're here or not. And I'm gonna frame it a little bit to try to...
Chris, I'm just trying to understand, it's not, it's not the item that we're on?
You know, that's fine.
I mean, I...
No, you're right.
Before you go too much farther.
You know, I just was ready to dive into this. Sorry, the puzzled looks on everybody's face should have tipped me off. I'm just a little bit ahead, sorry. Thank you, Mayor.
No, you're good.
That's what Mayor pretends.
That's what we're here for.
Yes, one of many things. All right, so we're on to Resolution Number 69, Series 2025.
Stay tuned for the Underpass.
Yes. Resolution approving an ice rink management and license agreement with the Main Street Louisville Business Improvement District. Do we have a staff presentation? I think we do.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of city council, Rob Zuccaro, Community Development Director for the city. I'm gonna be making a brief staff presentation for you. So there's a resolution before you to approve a contract with the, the Main Street Louisville Business Improvement District to operate winter skate for this upcoming season. As I think you're all aware, a couple of years ago, the previous vendor had run into some issues with their equipment, and the city worked with the LRC. And really, the LRC, our Urban Renewal District, stepped up and bought a lot of the equipment needed to run that, and then the city partnered with LRC to hire a vendor for the last two years that has operated the ice skating rink in downtown to keep that, to keep that going. So what we, on the staff level, we've been working with both the Downtown Business Association and the BID, the Business Improvement District, to see if we can come to an agreement for them to actually operate it. I think there's a lot of win-win type benefits for them to do it, for both the city and them to help support businesses downtown. So this is a budgeted item as well, so I wanted to point that out. With this new structure, we do have a little over $200,000 budgeted for this coming season. We also have revenues, so with this structure, we won't have those revenues, but when you net those out, we will still have $80,000 available to support this program. So what's before you in that contract? There's some city responsibilities as well as the Business Improvement District responsibilities. We would be providing all of that equipment that we've already purchased, delivering it, removing it, and storing it. We would pay the, the Business Improvement District a management fee of $30,000 that they would use for management. Now, that is not for a third-party vendor. We anticipate they would hire a third-party vendor, and they would receive the revenues from the winter skate, so that would just be for management. The city would also be responsible for paying for electricity. We're estimating that could be up to $20,000, it could be a little less, but we're expecting up to $20,000. So altogether, it's about $50,000 of city expenses. We would also be removing trash, is in the contracts, so within existing receptacles around Steinbach Pavilion where the ice rink is located. The BID would be responsible for renting or purchasing some additional equipment that is needed, including the Zamboni, the chiller, portable toilets. They would be responsible for all management of the operations, events, and concessions. The agreement states that they would maintain the ticket prices and hours of operation from last season, and then it would operate from November 21st of this year to February 16th of next year. So staff is recommending approval. As you know, this is a tradition for the city of Louisville, so it's, I think it's important to keep it moving forward. For that reason, it provides recreational opportunities for our residents and visitors, promotes economic vitality, and supports downtown businesses. I think this also demonstrates a really good example of a partnership between the city and the DBA and the Business Improvement District. So we do have Lawrence Anderson and Rick Crone, who are representing the BID this evening. They don't have a presentation or anything they want to say, but they're available to help answer questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you. Council, do you have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Cooper.
Yeah, I actually wanted to follow up on a question that I'd asked before the meeting, just because I didn't completely understand. So I'm just, I'm interested in sort of comparing the model we had the last two years with the current model, particularly regarding the finances. So like in the previous model, we, we took in the revenue, I think, from ticket sales, and now we're not, for instance. So I'm just curious, you know, like, kind of speaking like in a ballpark kind of manner.
Yeah, yeah. That was a lot more complicated, so we did take in the revenues, and that actually went into the Urban Renewal Fund, those revenues, they, and then the city paid for certain things. There was kind of a mix of urban renewal and city funding. The city, between the city and the Urban Renewal District, we spent about $95,000, a little bit of refined numbers of what we had emailed earlier, but about $95,000, about 50, 55 came from the city, 40,000 came from the Urban Renewal District. So that's the net money in after the, the ticket sale revenues and concession revenues were put back into the Urban Renewal Fund.
Okay, that net number is very helpful. The other thing, again, I want to follow up on my other question, too. I am quite interested in some kind of, again, I don't, so in previous years, or last year in particular, the Broom Ball League that had been playing at the ice rink was very upset that they weren't able to do it last year. And I know that businesses downtown were also upset about that because they brought in a lot of people during the weekday, weeknights. And so I'm, I'm curious about some, again, I don't know if the Broom Ball League wants to come back, but I'm curious about some kind of, I don't know, maybe not a guarantee, but something like a guarantee that if they do want to come back, that we would be welcoming to them, and...
Yeah, so, so under the contract, we would be handing over those decisions to the Business Improvement District, but I think if they want to come up and speak to that, if Lawrence or Rick want to come up.
Rick Crone, I'm the, well, I'm the immediate past president of the DBA, as I got rid of that job, and a current board member of the DBA also. I'm kind of the chief cook and bottle washer for the BID, so it's, I'm kind of in between. The short answer is, we want Broom Ball. It brings in money, it brings in people, it's a great thing. We've talked with a potential contractor who says, "Great, I'm in there, they're in." So I think we can allay your fears as much as possible. There are also opportunities, as I understand in the resolution, to possibly tweak the contract, we'll add it in. So I think that's probably something we could do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other questions? All right, we take public comments if there are any on this. Any public comment? Okay, then let's take it back to council. Do we have, we didn't have any questions. Do we have a motion?
Yeah. I'd make a motion, and we passed Resolution 69, Series 2025, a resolution approving an ice rink management and license agreement with the Main Street Louisville BID.
Second.
And I would...
Sorry.
...by speaking on behalf of that, of that motion. Yeah, I think, you know, the, the winter skate concept is absolutely fantastic. I think our community loves it. Having, having the ice rink down on Front Street is just a great, great winter activity, and, you know, people come down, similar to street fair, similar to farmer's market, it's one of those moments where people are like, "Oh, my goodness, this town is so cool." And I really, I don't think it's been run well in the last couple of years, and I'm really excited for a change. I'm really excited to get the Broom Ball back, and I'm excited for, you know, some improvement in, in that space, and I think we have the right people involved to, to make those improvements. I'm really, I'm really looking forward to that change, and I appreciate you guys stepping up to, to help us get to the finish line. So I'm very supportive of this, of this next step, and I know there'll be bumps along the way, but I think this is a good, a good change.
Are there other questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Cooper.
I'd just like to say that I entirely agree with Councilmember Dickinson.
I do have a question for Mr. Anderson, I suppose, on this, and the question, if, if you want to come up, probably, thanks. One of the things that I, I think it's safe to say we had problems with last week, or last... last year with our previous contractor, was that there were, there was some dissatisfaction with the refusal to talk about conflicts between, between that vendor of services and people who had contracted with him or it, his entity. And I'm wondering what sorts of things are being planned this year to avoid that, if there are any.
Well, I'm Lawrence Anderson, general manager for the BID now. So, you know, we anticipate having Boulder Creek events as the operator, again, who ran the rink for many, many years before Rocky Rinks took it over and did it very successfully, other than, you know, some problems with equipment and ice. We're going to, we're going to address those since we have the equipment now the city owns and get a real proper Zamboni for ice maintenance. But I, you know, obviously, we're going to be, you know, all about the community and making this a great experience for everybody. That's a top priority.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I guess what I would suggest as a friendly amendment on this would be on the agreement with the new, and I believe it's the, bear with me for just a second. It's the ice rink management and license agreement. I don't, I'm not going to give you any language or suggest any language, but some sort of alternative dispute resolution provision that might be in there that, that, you know, the bid and the vendor might be able to take advantage of, just to require mediation. If there's fairly simple mediation, having somebody potentially sit down with parties. And that's, you know, that's, that would be something that I guess I would suggest that maybe we have the.
Well, I.
City Attorney draft or somebody like that.
Handout.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm just saying, I certainly welcome the City Attorney, but I think this is our agreement with the bid, not bid's agreement with the vendor.
I do understand that. I think one of the things, maybe the, what I'm really driving at is a provision to require the bid to, when it contracts with its vendor, to have some sort of alternative dispute resolution provision. I don't need to know what it is, but I just worry that we may, through no fault of the bid, get into that situation where we have somebody in the community who's mad about something with respect to the operator that they've contracted with, and there's no real way to try to see, see through or to resolve those complaints. I, I have no desire to interfere with the bid. I think it would be, that would be my only suggestion is to include a provision like that or have, you know, to agree with the bid, in this agreement with the bid, to require them to take care of that and include in their own contract with, who, you know, whatever groups are coming forward, some sort of provision like that. Is that, you know, I don't know.
Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
I share the concern of Councilmember Hefner. This agreement is between the city and the BID, and what you are talking about is requiring the BID to have an alternative dispute resolution in its contract with its vendor. But the scenario that you describe is somebody who is, if it were to be repeated, somebody who's not a party to that contract either, and trying to invoke some sort of alternative dispute resolution to resolve conflict between the vendor and some, somebody who's not a party to that contract. I, I just don't see how we control that through our contract with the BID. I, I don't know how I would draft that, I don't know how we would enforce it.
I think for, for my part, it would be something that couldn't be other than a voluntary, I mean, it would be something that they would, we would ask them to put in and see if, I mean, I, I just, I, what I'm struggling with, just to pull it out, it doesn't sound like there's probably support for that. But what I am, I am concerned about this problem, because we've had it before, and it's not, it's, it's not the city's problem at some level, and yet it is. We spent an enormous amount of time, and Deputy City Manager Fox can attest to how much time we spent, and people on council spent that time. So I, I will withdraw my friendly amendment. I don't know how anybody else thinks about this issue, but I'm, I'm just concerned about it. I, I understand what you're concerned.
I'm glad we're moving on from the previous vendor.
Yeah, I mean, I hope that that's enough. All right. We can move on to any other discussion? If not, can we get all in favor of approving resolution number sixty-nine, series twenty-two-five?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Discussion direction is our next item concerning the Boulder Office of Disaster Management proposal. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes.
Please.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. So the item before you tonight is related to the proposal from the Boulder Office of Disaster Management for, for Louisville to join Boulder ODM. So for background, Boulder ODM was formed in two thousand and five between Boulder County and the city of Boulder to oversee the delivery of disaster services. Their mission focuses on disaster management through community preparedness, mitigation of hazards, and effective disaster response and recovery. And ODM has a highly skilled and dedicated team led by Mike Chard. In May sixth of two thousand and twenty-five, council authorized me to initiate discussions related to Louisville joining Boulder ODM. And then in July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, council held a two thousand and twenty-six budget retreat in which you preliminarily approved the funding to join Boulder ODM. The proposal is attached to the council communication report. The methodology is that Mike Chard looked at the current cost to provide services to Boulder County and the city of Boulder, and then what would be required to add Louisville to the services. They held Boulder County and the city of Boulder static in terms of what they would contribute and attributed the additional cost to Louisville. But with that, Louisville will receive eighteen percent of the hours from Boulder ODM. So what that breaks down to is one thousand eight hundred seventy-two hours per year, of which thirty percent, which is similar to the city of Boulder and county of Boulder, would be allocated for emergency operations center readiness. So if there isn't a disaster that occurs, Boulder ODM would stand up an EOC to assist Louisville with that disaster. And then one thousand three hundred ten hours to assist Louisville in creating a yearly work plan. In two thousand and twenty-six, that focus would be creating an emergency operations plan as part of an annex to Boulder ODM's emergency operations plan, also working with the police department and Louisville Fire Protection District on evacuation routes, and then also doing a variety of things related to training to help prepare staff to understand their roles in the event of a disaster and emergency and how to implement an EOC. This aligns with council's work plan, and it, it supports economic vitality, safety, core services, and housing. The fiscal impact for the first year is two hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars and eight cents, of which, as I mentioned previously, council has preliminarily approved this in the budget. That eight cents is very important, I know that you were looking at that, yes. And the alternatives are to not continue with the process to join Boulder ODM and direct staff to identify the resources necessary for the city to provide similar disaster management services. This is not an alternative that I recommend. I really feel like we would gain tremendous value from the expertise within Boulder ODM, and they would just help the organization to be able to respond to a variety of hazards. So with that, the recommendation is to authorize me to work with Director Chard to develop an updated intergovernmental agreement that will allow Louisville to join Boulder ODM and outline the scope of services that Louisville will receive. The next step would be Mike Chard would go before the Boulder ODM Board to also have authorization to work with me on developing the IGA. We would develop the IGA and then bring it back to our respective elected bodies, legislative bodies, to approve. I asked Director Chard if the possibility exists that we could potentially join as of January first. He thinks timing-wise that could work, which would align well with our fiscal year, then also align well with developing the work plan for two thousand and twenty-six. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any council member have any questions about the presentation?
I just have one thing to note. I would really like to say thank you to Louisville Fire Protection Chief Wilson. He could not be here tonight, but I really appreciate the letter that he submitted. And I think it's a great gesture that he proposed to try to find some, some funding in their budget to support Louisville's efforts in this.
Thanks. Any questions from council? Yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
I think just one question. Do we have any reason to believe that sort of course of events that you just stated that would follow tonight's resolution or direction would not go according to plan? Or do we, you know, in terms of getting the other parties to sign on to the IGA and so forth?
The fact that Director Chard prepared the scope of work, I know he went before the Boulder ODM Board to discuss Louisville joining. And so at this point, I think that all parties are supportive of Louisville joining. And then also in my conversations with the city manager for Boulder and then the county administrative officer for Boulder County, they also seem to be supportive of Louisville joining.
Okay, good. All right. Why don't we move on to public comment? I see one online. Is there other public comment?
First up is Tanya Samaru, followed by Larry Donner.
Hi. I get to comment before Larry? I'm flattered. Tanya Samaru, and the main feedback I want to give is whatever Diana Langley says. Thank you so much for your leadership, Diana. And, and if you do end up voting to join the ODM, that means that this city is showing major leadership in Boulder County. I'm really disappointed in the other cities aren't, may, I don't know, they're in discussions, I guess, but I hope other cities will join, will join, and I'm glad we're showing leadership. This is the right thing to do. It's good for us, it's good for our partners, it's good for the county, like, this is life moving forward. I hope that moving forward, council will always see this as just part of basic public safety, as important as police radios are. And I hope everyone, I think the biggest problem with emergency management is that most people don't understand what it is. It's different than what the fire department does, it's different from what police do. It's a sort of coordinated management of resources around everything that's happening in a major emergency. So, for example, on the day of the Marshall Fire, if we were working with the ODM perhaps a little more closely, maybe they would have figured out that we had a problem with our train on the tracks, and they would have moved it out of the way for, called the train company, you know, for us, that kind of thing. You know, there were animal evacuations in unincorporated Boulder County, and in Louisville, we have a pet memorial. That's the difference between having the ODM and not having the ODM. So thank you so much. I think probably you understand the importance of this, but I hope as we, you know, what's really important about doing this, too, is that, you know, I'm very happy we have this city manager who understands this well, and it's great when you have people who do, but you just don't know who your next manager is going to be and who your next council is going to be. And the problem is that people just don't understand what emergency management is. It's, 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 they get confused, and, you know, this is about accountability, having structure, you know, for years moving forward, and I'm very happy about it. So thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
Next up is Larry Donner.
Hi, my name's Larry Donner. I live at ten twenty Willow Place in Louisville. And first, I want to thank our city manager for the effort she has put in on, on this proposal. As you know, in December of two thousand and twenty-one, we were caught absolutely flat-footed. And in subsequent years, the city has done very little to rectify that situation. I think this proposal moves us forward. I think it will help the city deal with any large-scale incidents or disasters we may have in the future, and I urge the council to support the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
That's it.
Okay, that's the only public comment? All right, I'll take it back to council for perhaps a motion or further discussion? Yes, Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. But I guess, I'm not sure that we really need a motion, just.
You're right.
Discussion and direction. But my, I, I mean, I completely support the resident comments, and additionally, want to really thank City Manager Langley for this effort, the direction, not only listening to the council, but listening to the community and having the knowledge and wisdom and experience and using it in this role. I think our staff are going to have a lot more security, and I think working with police and fire, and I cannot thank you enough, because a lot of residents don't understand, the Louisville Fire District is not part of the city of Louisville, it is its own entity. And the level of coordination that you and everyone is going to be doing is for such a greater good to keep us safe. And I would also agree, I think the number one priority for your elected is to make sure that you are safe. And there are a lot of other things that are high priority, but I think that's the first and foremost thing, and every single member of this community can agree on that, and we can't all agree on everything. So it's delightful, I am very excited to be part of this. It will make me feel a lot safer having been one of the people impacted and not evacuated, and that probably would not have happened. We might have actually evacuated all the neighborhoods in the city of Louisville had we partnered with Office of Disaster Management. So I thank you, and I urge everyone to give the same exact direction.
Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember.
I agree with everything that has been said, especially Councilmember Kern's comments. I want to thank City Manager Langley and also Deputy City Manager Sam Fox. The effort that they have put in over the last couple of years has just been remarkable. And to come up with the, the proposal to join an, an area-wide coalition that's, everyone is concerned about safety and how are we going to do it? And it's not just fire, although that's, you know, our biggest priority right now, I think, but it's also floods, it's hailstorms, it's whatever is coming that people need to be warned about. And to have it be a, a whole district-wide warning system, I think is amazing, and thank you very much.
Okay. Yes, I'm not sure who is first, but I.
I, I am going to make a motion that we accept and adopt the staff recommendation as it appears in our packet.
All right, second. Any comment? Any comment? Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman. Very briefly, I am really pleased that we are moving in this direction to join the Boulder ODM.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Any opposed? Very good. Thanks. Now, I think we're ready to talk about the South Street Underpass. I'll give you a little bit of a preview. As I said, started to say before, I'm a big believer in experiments. We'll see if this one is helpful or not. Council's been hearing from quite a number of residents and quite a number of businesses about the South Street Underpass. And light of that, I'm going to frame item just a little bit differently than we usually do even before the hearing or the presentation from staff. You know, and then public comment, council comment. I haven't discussed the approach with council in advance, so they may be surprised. But I'm doing it with. But I'm doing it with a series of questions for the sake of focusing our consideration and potentially saving public, staff, and council some time. So, the questions that I'd like a little bit of input at the outset, and we're just going to do some straw votes on this, is, is there anyone on council who is interested in pursuing option A? Okay. Councilmember Cooperman, are you interested?
I'm not sure at the moment. I was hoping to ask a few more questions. Probably not, but, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Thumbs up from six, five of us, and thumbs kind of potentially down on that. All right. Why don't we hear the staff presentation, and then I may ask the question again? Do you get some questions answered?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kirk Cora, Director of Public Works and Utilities. Our presentation tonight will be brief. Before you is consideration of a contract for two options. One of those options is for finalizing the design and moving towards construction of South Street Underpass in a current configuration that has been planned over many years and has been planned over many years to close South Street due to constraints over time of trying to find alternative locations. Also before you is an option B that goes back into alternatives analysis and looks to see with new information that there may be other partners out there, land partners that allow us to move the underpass to a different location that does not close South Street. Overall, option A is about $1.6 million for design, and option B is about $1.9 million for design. The total budget for the underpass is around $10 million right now, and of that $10 million, about $4 million is city money, $1 million is LRC money, $2 million is CDOT slash Lafayette grant money, and $3 million is Dr. Cog money. So, option A has been working to design that underpass within that $10 million budget. The underpass itself is part of a bigger corridor plan, and that corridor plan is to move cars, bikes, and people safely up and down the corridor. I think if any of us use that corridor today at the wrong time of day, it's congested, and it's certainly unsafe if you're trying to move on a bike up and down that corridor or as a person in various locations. So, the underpass is phase one of a larger plan that will take place over many years, five, 10, 15, 20 years. It just depends on priorities and funding levels. To put the underpass in place connects the east and west sides of Highway 42, and I think that's obvious to everyone, but the parts that aren't obvious is, we get into conversations that there's also a signal there, and the signal's adequate, and we don't need an underpass. But over time, as you try to put more cars through the corridor or more people crossing the corridor, the more times you stop traffic with a light to allow pedestrians to cross safely, that starts to add up, and the corridor over time will break down. So, that is a portion of why the underpass is necessary. Also, the city has consideration of longer-term plans for bus rapid transit or trains. When those things come, we can't predict that today, but as we build out for our future versus preclude anything for the future, the underpass starts to consider having parking, additional parking on the east side of 42, as well as connect, better connecting the existing parking at the sports field. So, the underpass starts to weave many things together, including the existing trail systems that aren't necessarily obvious for everyone. Staff's prepared tonight to pivot to option B and look at alternative analysis, given that we may have land partners available to discuss where to put things, or we're prepared to drive forward with option A. Our biggest constraints right now is we do have grant funding that has a deadline of October of next year to get construction going, and so we're really getting into a critical path to make our decisions and really get this forward progress moving. So, I'll stop there to answer questions, but we are hearing loud and clear that there are businesses in the area, there are residents in the area, that feel that closing South Street would be detrimental. And as a staff, we're flexible to go with what alternative is best for the community as a whole. And the only reason we've ended up at option A over time with South Street being closed is because we didn't have land partners in the past. And so, this new information really opens the door for other thought processes.
Thank you, Director. Do you have any questions?
Sure.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Yeah, so, a few different things. We've heard concerns about emergency access, egress and ingress to the Miners Field neighborhood. And so, if we went ahead with the option A, are there any kinds of, kind of plans for that type of access, aside from going up to Short Street?
Yeah, Short Street is an option. Also, the cul-de-sac now that was previously closed off has Hardscape, believe it or not, installed. So, that is a emergency access right now. So, there are, in theory, you have the cul-de-sac, you have South Street and Short Street as three egress points, even though the cul-de-sac's not obvious. Without South Street, you would still have two.
Okay. And what about just for regular access? I mean, right, we, we closed the alley and Spruce Street access to 42 in the past. You know, is it at all reasonable to consider reopening any of those, or not really?
I mean, those are always avenues of consideration. Those things were closed at the request of participants in the neighborhood. So, that would be a larger neighborhood conversation.
Okay.
I think also the Spruce Street access, if you reopen it, creates other access issues with the Pine Street intersection and adds, reintroduces safety concerns.
Okay. And then, sort of similarly to the north of South Street, you know, are there, I didn't see any discussion of it, but are there any possibilities for an access point to the businesses that's not South Street but is just north of South Street?
Like, referencing possibly like a right-in, right-out into the parking lot. I think that is really heavily dependent on our design and if we can make all the grades work. So, in that area, you're going from a Short Street intersection where there's a traffic light there, sidewalks and whatnot, and you're trying to get down to South Street. And so, as you go along the Tebow Plaza property, you're moving down. To have that right-in, right-out while you're moving down starts to introduce grade changes, and you start to get into issues of like, do you need a bridge, not a bridge? Can you even fit it in? And then, if you move it further towards Short Street to kind of work with where you could fit it in, it kind of starts to eliminate its usefulness because it gets so close to the intersection and also introduces other safety issues. So, there's a lot of dynamics in this area. There's a lot of infrastructure. There's a lot of things we're trying to avoid. There's a lot of businesses and residents we're trying to take care of, and so when you stack all these things, it's really heavily constrained. And that's why we ended up at option A over the years, and that's why having possibly a land partner introduces the ability to rethink this with an option B.
Okay. Is it appropriate for you to elaborate a little bit on a possible land partner, or not really at the moment?
I don't think as staff right now we're in a position to elaborate on who partners may be. Those partners may be here, and they could elaborate themselves, but certainly the city's not in that position at this point.
Okay. And then, okay, I think that might be all my questions for the moment.
Thanks. All right, I'm going to ask the question again. Is anyone on council, pardon me? Oh, you had a question too?
Yeah.
All right. I guess.
Just curious with the potential, the difference between potentially keeping South Street where it is and doing the underpass farther to the north potentially, like, are there, the, I see the numbers on, you know, potential costs for each one, but is there, you know, potential cost savings in the, in the, in the, in a new location, you know, to get rid of the road is frustrating for a lot of people, but also it's expensive to demolish a road and get rid of all the asphalt and sidewalks and all those things? Is there potentially cost savings in not having to do all that work?
I don't think we quite know yet. The things that are really going to dictate that is we really need to start, we, to move the underpass north actually further constrains the amount of land we have to kind of get up to grade.
Right.
To spread out. And so, to move north, we get further constrained, and now we introduce walls, retaining walls. And so, you're taking away some costs but adding others, and I think we really need to work through this with the businesses that are impacted and the residents that are impacted and where that new alignment will be, and then just add it all up. So, as part of option B, we'll go through one to two workshops with people in that area and our design team, and we'll develop some engineering estimates that might convey one or two different ideas than what we have today. And then, we come back to the city council, and we'll be able to answer those questions before we spend that whole design budget. So, I think there's like two hops if we go to option B. One is, we rethink what we can do and what the rough cost is. We talk with you about it. Ideally, there's buy-in from the area on that option B, and then the council can decide whether there's value, and we move forward for final design and construction, or we decide that like the underpass just doesn't work for what we're willing to invest in.
Okay, yeah, because I guess my, my concern is, we move away from option A towards option B, find out that option B is not possible, and then we're back to the same question of option A or not, but we spent six months and hundreds of thousands of dollars to get there. So, I'm just, so I'm just trying to see, like, read some of the tea leaves of, it's a, it'd be relatively the same cost, or there would be some cost savings, some additional costs, those sort of things, but like, as a decision-maker, just trying to understand, you know, what, you know, your perception of, of the delta is between the two potential locations and what, you know, we have sunk costs, if you will, and what the design we've already done. If we do a new design and don't go with it, those become new sunk costs, but like, just trying to understand, you know, the weight of the decision tonight to either just go with option A or just go with a different option, or if we're still trying to battle between, well, eventually, a year from now, six months now, we'll be still be deciding between A and B, or is this like a departure from A and we're on to something new? And maybe that's too many questions in one, but just, just trying to understand a little better the implication of the, of the conversation tonight.
Yeah, we can link all those questions together. I think, number one, we're going to still try to target a $10 million budget.
Yeah.
Now, that, that could, we, the $10 million budget, we had a $1 to $2 million contingency that we had in there, and we still have a lot of ground to cover to finalize this project, so that could get eaten up by who knows what's going to happen in the world, but we're still going to target the $10 million budget. Now, if that increases, maybe increases $1 million, $2 million, $3 million, I won't know till we get a little further and we have that engineering cost estimate, but we're going to target 10. Can Plan B be done? During the underpass ballot measure, we did design the underpasses to the north. There are concepts that we're going to go back to. It's not like we're just starting over on a clean slate, but we do want to start over with our stakeholders that have become very involved and make sure that those previous concepts also align with the values and interests that are of concern tonight. So, I think yes on all those things, we can cover that ground.
Okay. Did you have another comment? All right, one more comment.
Yeah.
One more round, and I ask the question.
I guess this might be a little bit harder to answer, but, so, no, for option A, we've scaled back a little bit what we were initially envisaging for the underpass. And, you know, so it's a little bit narrower, and the approach is maybe a little steeper. Do you think with option B, could we, I don't know, could we get a better underpass in terms of, by, by looking at one of those other options? You know, from, from the perspective of people who are going to use the underpass?
Yes, I don't want to spend $10 million and give you a solution that no one wants to use. So, we, we have to, by default, design something that people are going to feel is safe and approachable and usable for the whole area. So, I would just say like, we would not build something if we can't get to that point. So, yes, we will do that. Now, what that looks like today, I don't know, and we might have to incur a little more costs to create that space the way we need it to be, but we'll just, this is where we'll go through that alternatives analysis with everyone in the area and our design team, and then come back to the council with options for you to choose from.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'm going to ask the question again. Is anyone on council interested in pursuing option A? Okay, good. Then we won't need to take a vote or anything like that. Let's move on to option B. There is a gap, as folks know from the staff memo, of at least $3 million if we pursue option B as it's currently configured. So, for many, and for many reasons, I'm certainly not going to ask whether council is willing without a lot more information to, you know, fill that gap with capital funds. That's not teed up tonight, and we haven't given notice to the public about that in any event. And as I said, even, even if we'd given notice of it, we don't have enough information to be able to decide it. Seems like one of the considerations, whether Dr. Cog money could be shifted to some other part of the project. In the meantime, there might be a question of whether other grants can cover some of the design. These, and there's probably a lot of other questions that council may tonight be able to ask about, and I bet staff probably has other questions too if we go with this option. So, what, the question that I've, I'm going to ask right now is, provided that there's information that counseling is willing, excuse me, that the information that council needs to proceed with an option B or something like it, whether council is willing to have a discussion about exploring that kind of option, either option B or some riff, if you will, or variation on option B, obviously with a great deal more public input as well. Can I, can I get an answer?
Yeah, well, I just have a question about your preamble, which is you referenced in at least a three, at least $3 million gap. Can you, can you say more about that?
I thought that was the number.
Maybe Director Cora wants to weigh in, because that wasn't my understanding.
Go ahead.
I think right now, we're making a huge shift in what has been a multi-year project, and you're asking for just like, give me the magic answer of what the number's going to be. My answer is, I have to go figure out from the previous concepts and the stakeholders what's, what appetite we can design to, and then we'll come back. So, I've said we're going to target the $10 million to try to hold our budget. If it's not possible, that could go upwards by millions. We're going to have to spend a couple hundred thousand to get there. We're building a community. These are 50- to 100-year projects. These are things that like feel like a big deal today, but if you don't build these things out over time, as your large multi-year plans suggest and have been recommended through large public process, we don't evolve as a city. So, we're pivoting on a really big project, and I think we need to keep an open mindset. Will we take a few months to pivot and then get you better information? But there could be a range of zero gap, or there could be a range of multi-millions, and I don't want to sell you on bad information right now.
Where I'm getting that number, though, is in the staff report. It talks about additional funding needs of 1.5 to 2.8, so.
Yeah, I think you, you just phrased it as at least a $3 million gap, and I don't think we know that sitting here today.
Well, and that's, I think that's fair.
I think it might be fair to say up to, up to, or up to approximately.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, it could be, as Director Cora just said, zero.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. I think what I'm just asking is whether we're interested in considering filling that gap with further, if we get further information, to have that discussion, have that discussion amongst ourselves, have the discussion publicly with business owners and the public. If that's something we're interested in. If that's something we're interested in, we can talk about and can have public comment, I suppose, about information that we might want to have if we do that, because that's not going to be something we're going to be able to decide, I think, tonight. That's the reason for the question. Thumbs up or thumbs down? Mayor Purtem, okay. Let me, why don't we do this? Why don't we at least attempt, before we do anything further, to, to ask what kinds of questions, ask staff what kinds of questions they think need to be asked and that they need to provide information to us, and then we can ask that ourselves if we have additional questions.
Thank you, Mayor. I think if, if council's considering option B, as Director Cowher said tonight, you know, what he would recommend is that you award the total design contract with the understanding that we would just be initiating the alternatives analysis, and then we would bring that back to council before any other action is taken, so that council can see the results of that alternatives analysis. Also, as he mentioned, there would be engagement with the surrounding businesses and residents to get their input on those alternatives. And he also noted there was a couple of attachments included in the council communication that showed previous alignments that were located directly north of South Street. And, you know, so there's some, some idea of what in the underpass could look like, and we would be starting with that as the base to try to solicit input, and then also work with Kim Lee Horn on are there other alternatives, probably within that close proximity that should be considered. And then I think to get to your earlier question, the council communication report does note that under option B, it could be a potential project shortfall of about 2.76 million. I do not believe that that includes any property acquisition. And so as we move forward, we just want to be very transparent with council and with the community that going with option B, there is a potential that we could be bringing forward a project to you that does not fit within the $10 million budget, and that as we continue to increase design costs, that reduces the amount for construction. And at some point, we may be bringing a project towards you, for you, that has to consider additional funding input from capital funds. And so as, as long as you know that we're bringing design alternatives to you and that you will have another off-ramp with this, we just want to be very clear that going this direction could result in a higher-cost project.
Given that, council members have questions about what the city manager's just described. We can just, yeah, I think we should go to.
Go ahead. Do you want to go to public comment?
I will, I will, unless you've got a question.
Maybe the last thing before public comment. Yeah, it's just, I mean, what, what we have heard, right? And so what I, what I think I see from plan, option, sorry, option B, is, you know, the emphasis on, on maintaining South Street, the emphasis on maintaining the access to the parking lot from the south, and obviously having an underpass that, that functions and works, and that the only way any of this is going to potentially work is with a property acquisition. And so I, I think we get all of that, and those are the things that like, I just don't want to move forward and have you come back five months later and be like, yeah, we did it all, but you know, you still can't access South Street from the neighborhood, for instance, like, whoa, right? So I think we're saying those things out loud. I think we've heard that from the community. That South Street is, is, is important, access to the parking lot is important, and the underpass is important. And so as long as that's kind of the direction, I'm happy to hear public input on, on where we're kind of headed.
So just to clarify one thing, if, if, well, let's, let's wait on that question. I can ask that question later. Unless there are other council questions of staff, let's proceed to public comment. It's all right.
Just, just really quickly, and I think maybe City Manager Langley, you were sort of commenting on this. I, I just want to make sure that we're not going to spend, you know, 50, 40 or 50% of the new design budget, like putting incredible designs together without engaging the stakeholders. I think some simple idea drawings are enough for them to have the buy-in on the project to kind of help bring the costs into control, if you, if that's.
Yeah, absolutely. We want to spend as little as possible to get to a buy-in.
Thank you, thank you.
And you do think you're going to be talking to Dr. Cog and the grant, potential grant funders if we do go down that route of, of the second, the option B, right? There's, there's issues there because potentially, we don't want to lose funding.
I think option B, we're prepared to execute within the timeframes that we need to. So we don't really feel like we're at a point where we have to talk with our grant providers, unless our timelines are going to extend. And right now, I think we're all aligning and we're about to sprint and we can make those deadlines.
How long would it take to, the point was made just a minute ago, do you think it would take to get to that point when you'd come back to us? Not, you know, with public.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is probably two to three months to come back around to you. We're also entering the holidays when no one's around, including residents, so it may extend. But we're, we're going to get this done. At a high level, we understand the priorities that have been clearly stated tonight. We understand a cost is a huge deal for the overall city budget, and so we understand the marching orders.
Okay, well, we're not quite there yet, but let's get some public comment. Go ahead.
Up first is Dave Robertson.
Thank you, Director.
Followed by Jeanne Morgan.
Thank you. I think you've already taken care of most of my questions. I was here to argue against option A, and since you've already tabled that and are proceeding to look at other options, that makes me happy. Go for it from there. Please appreciate the priorities of money these days. As the property taxes go up, life becomes more expensive, processes and expenditures that are only cosmetic or are only going to pay off far in the distant future should be weighed against rainy day funds and current needs. Go from there, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Jeanne Morgan, followed by Tom Rafferty.
Jeanne Morgan, I live 1131 Spruce Street, just south of Miners Field. I've lived there since 1970, and I lived there when there was nothing up there north of the ballpark. I don't mind my street, Spruce Street being closed down, but I do object to South Street at the ballpark being closed down. All that parking for the ballpark would be lost, and where are people going to park? They're going to park along Lee, they're going to park in the neighborhoods. I guess I'm a little bit confused about these different options. I guess I, I, when you talk about option A and option B, I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about, but I will call you all individually and get clarification on that to make sure that our next meeting, I know a little bit more about what the other options are. But I would suggest that they go, that the underpass, if you need it, absolutely do not shut down South Street, leave our parking for our, our ball field, for our access to our shopping center, access out of our neighborhood. And just, we, we need that, that option in order to be able to get out of our neighborhood, especially in an emergency. I also have a note that I, that my neighbor Eddie Gomez gave me, and his family's lived here since 46, and he's up there on, he's the only house that faces the highway. So he has a note that I, I hope you have received. All right, but I'll, I'll be in touch with you all individually when you talk about option, option B. I'm unclear about what that is. Thank you.
I'm going to take a moment of personal privilege to say that we have agreed amongst council that there is no support for pursuing closing of South Street. That's not an option that we're going to be considering.
That is not going to be closed.
No.
That is correct.
That's correct. Just to make that clear to folks.
We could come in and out of South Street. Yes.
I'm going to, I'm, that's what I just said.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's proceed with public comment.
Up next is Tom Rafferty, followed by Gillian Millar.
Good evening, council and honorable mayor. Tom Rafferty, 945 Rex Street, Louisville. I can't thank you enough for the work you've done approaching this and considering everybody. January 14th, I think it was this year, you, you said you were going to measure everything through the lens of equity. And for everybody watching on TV, I would say it sounds to me like you've considered that, because if you close South Street off, it would be inequitable to many, many people. And I, Jeanne is my friend for 30 years, and when I go over to visit her, I take South Street. Or when I go to the very delicious Mo's for a bacon cheese bagel, I turn in there. And when I'm going to Home Deep, I mean Ace, I see people coming in and out of there quite often. So what I was surprised, when I canvassed the neighborhood, we were knocking on doors, when I went over there, I just said, I bet there's 20 properties over there, maybe a couple of dozen. There were, I don't know how many properties there were, but there's one five-plex. So there were 30 different citizens over there that would be affected by this, if you closed that street off. And I don't know that very many people know that. And the thing of it is, one person in one apartment should have as much clout as somebody who lives in a nice fancy subdivision somewhere else. And so another thing, I know you've heard me say this many times, the circulatory system, when you have an artery and you cut the artery off, it puts pressure on the whole rest of the system. City planners know this, and transportation engineers know this, and it's in the transportation master plan that multimodal connections are the right way to do it. So I'm not against bicycles. I think it's a really good idea, but I don't want to use up three minutes. So thank you so much for engaging us into a set of roundtable meetings, and thank you for the property owner who's, who's working with you. And thank you for all the businesses, too.
Next up is Gillian Millar, followed by Patrick McCartney.
Hi, so Gillian Miller from the executive, executive director from Chamber of Commerce. So following recent engagement, staff asked the chamber to gather some feedback in advance of this evening's meeting. So on behalf of the chamber and the Daylo businesses, thank you for the opportunity. We want to acknowledge the staff for the significant work that has gone into the South Street, that underpass, and for the time they've taken to meet with the chamber. What we'd like to share this evening are the perspectives of the Daylo business community. And the staff packet refers to some businesses raising concerns. Our outreach shows that all of the businesses in Daylo have worries about their ability to make it through extended construction. These concerns go beyond the traffic access, Plan A, they are about day-to-day survival. So businesses have consistently raised concerns about economic vitality. Closures would mean lost storefronts, reduced sales tax revenue, lost jobs, and the weakening of the vibrant district. The construction duration, either Plan, right, multi-month work limits access, creates noise and dust, and interrupts customer flow, especially for coffee shops, dining, and wellness providers that depend on daily traffic. These are mostly fast-serve businesses whose customers will find an alternative if it's not fast and convenient. The cumulative impact, this is phase one, and the Highway 42 widening will follow, so businesses fear back-to-back disruption over multiple years. Parking and access, the loss of stalls, the vehicle flow, and the drive-through access to Ziggy's also requires review. Noise and customer experience, restaurants, wellness providers can't survive during heavy construction activity. And then the question of need. Businesses asked how this specific underpass balances the long-term benefits with near terms, with near-term survival. So we acknowledge that option B better serves, preserves the South Street access than option A, and we thank staff for working to minimize that harm. But still, option B does not fully resolve the question of business survival through extended construction. So for that reason, we respectfully suggest commissioning some kind of business impact or need study to measure sales tax risk, job exposure, and survivor probability, and to weigh these outcomes against the broader community benefit, as well as continuing to explore design options or phasing strategies that reduce adverse impacts while still meeting long-term goals. We know how much effort the city has invested to advance this program, and we really value the broader Highway 42 vision, but our request is simple, that those businesses most directly affected be included in shaping the solution. So we welcome the chance to collaborate on a path that delivers the connectivity benefits of the project while safeguarding the vitality of the local economy. Thank you for your leadership and the commitment to balancing infrastructure improvements with economic sustainability for our community.
Thank you, Gillian.
Next up is Patrick McCartney, followed by Shannon Scott.
Good evening, mayor and city council, and to everybody on the staff, thank you for everything that you do for the city of Louisville and everybody here. My name is Patrick McCartney. I, along with Shannon Scott, who's coming up next, are co-owners of Rocky Mountain Tap and Garden at 1071 Courtesy Road. We're here to speak tonight on the South Street underpass and the effects it's going to have on all of our businesses and the area residents. Rocky Mountain Tap and Garden was born as a result of the Marshall Fire, and when our community needed places to reconnect, to heal, and to gather, that's where we, we decided there needed to be something there. Don't get me wrong, I understand these are 20, 30, 40, 50-year plans. I don't think they envisioned at the time that D-Lo would ever be there. Now all these businesses are there, and we, we hire youth and adults, we give back to the community constantly through support efforts to local schools, to charities, community awareness events with regards to celiac's, pet adoptions, whatnot. Our, our co-founding partners, Garrett Nikademas and Brittany Bartlett, are multi-generation families based here in Louisville. And the idea of option A, which we've already tabled, jeopardizes all of that from multiple points. And without going over all those again, since it's already been tabled, we're, we're still kind of concerned about option B. We kind of want to explore the idea of a, maybe a possibility of an option C, no underpass at all. We kind of almost feel like this is a bridge or an underpass to nowhere. Someone would have to come back to us and describe how this would be, actually be a benefit to Louisville in the face of losing all of our tax revenues from all of our businesses and all of our local residents. Without taking any more of your time, thank you.
Thanks. Any other?
Next up is Shannon Scott, followed by Stephen Tebow.
Hi, I'm Shannon Scott. I just want to say thank you to the council, the staff, and everyone for working so hard on this. We know that it's been a little contentious, and we very much appreciate all your efforts. So you just heard from my better half, so I'll be a little more succinct. Shortly after moving here, he and I stopped into Rocky Mountain Tap and Garden in Louisville to grab a drink because we had ordered food and it was going to take a while. And so that random stop led to us becoming co-owners just over two years later. And so we invested in the tap house because we wanted to be part of a business that welcomes everyone and just gives so much back to the community. But now, a little over six months later, after making that investment, that's all in jeopardy because a plan that was envisioned two decades, two decades ago by people who are no longer around, thought it was a good idea, and it may be, but just simply not in its current form. So when we decided to invest in Louisville, and Rocky, we were also investing in Louisville because we live in Erie, but we spend our mental, physical, and financial resources here. here. And we spend them in the community that you all represent. So the reality is that this construction will absolutely devastate the very businesses that give this corridor its economic vitality and its character. So the Delo Plaza tenants will suffer irreparable harm, as we have reduced accessibility that's drastically going to cut customer traffic, increased noise pollution and air pollution, and diminished safety concerns are going to further deter patrons. Our businesses already operate on very thin margins, and if we absolutely cannot stand the financial impact of a prolonged construction period with a long-term decline in visibility and access. And so preserving these businesses preserves jobs, it preserves local tax revenue, and it's the very identity of this community. So council members and mayor, I respectfully urge you to reconsider and re-envision this project. We absolutely support growth and expansion, we are not opposed to that, but this plan as it's presented is going to be the opposite of that. And we ask you to pause and explore alternatives that improve safety and accessibility without sacrificing the livelihood of the entrepreneurs that have worked so hard to make Lewisville thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Next up is Stephen Tebow, followed by Justin Livingston.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm Stephen Tebow. I'm the owner of Delo Plaza, as well as several of those properties here in Lewisville. By the way, it is Delo Plaza, not Tebow Plaza, downtown east Lewisville. Thank you. And I ask you to pause the South Street underpass and to study a much more equitable and beneficial alternative that would be better for the Delo Plaza businesses and the nearby community. Our tenants on this site are primarily quick-service restaurants and service providers. They're the heartbeat of Lewisville's local economy. They provide jobs, bring the community together, and create the kind of amenities, gathering spaces, and vibrancy that Lewisville wants and needs. For better or worse, these businesses depend on high turnover and vehicle traffic, such as Ziggy's, which makes 75% of its income from the drive-through. As councils heard, the current underpass alignment has never been studied for its effect on these businesses. As each of the businesses will tell you, they were not consulted on this project, the planned charrettes were canceled, and they are unanimous in their concern for this project as currently envisioned. Each of these tenants is adamant that even a 10% drop in business could result in their closures. Is this council truly prepared to move forward with plans that each business on-site is begging you not to do without studying other options? The opportunity cost of moving forward now is real, especially if South Street is permanently closed off. If these businesses are forced to endure the anticipated disruptions for 12 to 18 months of construction, their viability will definitely be challenged. In the future, Lewisville could lose a key hub of vitality that would be difficult, if not impossible, to get back. I'm urging this council to reject the fault, to reject the false choice of safer transit versus economic vitality. We can't have both, but not if South Street is closed and businesses are forced into failure. You have an opportunity tonight to decide whether Lewisville is a place that supports and appreciates and protects its small businesses, or whether you choose to move forward on a project that will potentially be detrimental to them. I urge you to pause this project, listen to the businesses most affected, and direct staff to study alternatives. That would not only be a positive process, but would also be a good process for Lewisville's future. And to realize there are options C and D, which we're happy to discuss, there isn't only two options available. I grew up in a small farming community in rural Kansas, and we had a saying that may be appropriate here: If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Next up is Justin Livingston, followed by Kelsey Galley.
Hello, friends. I came here all hot to fight you guys on A, and so you took a little wind out of my sails, and I appreciate that very much, more than you guys know. The reality is, my name's Justin Livingston, I own Ziggy's Coffee along with my wife. We also have a business, a consulting business on Main Street, and founder of The Guys Who Give, which we do right here in Lewisville as well. I do want to thank you guys for, for really listening, and I believe you did, and I've met several of you in person, as many of us have, to just talk about what an absolute gut punch that would have been. So the fact that we've pivoted away from that, thank you for that. As we explore B, and in my mind, B is just simply other options, there are many, many, and I hope that we really take the time, perhaps more than we did the last time with the new faces here, the new faces in Delo Plaza, to understand what the economic impact is. The pleasure of speaking to a couple of you guys at the Economic Vitality Committee, Meeting Group. And economic vitality has been such a, and small business support has been such a cornerstone of Lewisville, and you all, and the boards before you. And as we move forward with this project, balancing that with the construction and the end goal and how that will impact, it's been said before, I kind of just wanted to give my time to Gillian to come up and read her thing again, because I think she very well-articulated what a lot of us are thinking, that B is better than A, but B still has a lot of risk for us. A lot of businesses, and many of you own businesses and know that we operate, especially in today's climate, on razor-thin margins. I put people in business for a living, and I know that in situations in the past, construction can result in a 26% decrease in business. That is well beyond what will put us out of business. And so as we move forward together, the construction impacts, the impacts of doing this at one site versus another have absolute, potentially detrimental impacts on not only the businesses, but the community, the reputation, the families, the jobs who we employ, the many, many, many kids that come on Wednesday mornings during late start, and all of the folks that come to Ziggy's and all of the other businesses. So I appreciate where we've come so far. I think we've got a lot closer to a collaborative solution, and I hope now the door is open for us to really take this across the finish line and come up with a solution that really does fulfill the need and desire to increase safety and decrease congestion, but do it in a way that doesn't harm the businesses and the local residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Justin.
Next up is Kelsey Galley, followed by Michael Jacob.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Kelsey Galley. I'm from Yoga Gallery Wellness here in Lewisville. Honestly, this is my first time doing anything like this, so I had no idea what to expect. And watching my other co-business owners around watch them come up here, I'm looking at all your faces, and I see that you're all, you know, really listening. And that, you know, I had this whole speech, and I kind of just, I'm going off, going off script a little bit, because I just feel very grateful to be heard. As a small business owner, you know, we are a yoga and fitness studio, but our goal's to spread love, and I have never had a community like the one here in Lewisville. We've been here for about 16 months, and the construction for us is the thing that would really hurt us the most. Construction causes traffic. We operate on a tight schedule, and we have specific class times, and if people can't get to them, we can't, we don't, we lose that revenue. Noise concerns, air quality concerns, things that people have already talked about. I think you've heard the issues, because again, I see you listening, and I just so appreciate this opportunity to speak about what, what it is that we feel matters and what, what we've created. And so all of these things, you know, I believe that what we're doing, all these businesses, is more than just in our particular businesses. These things, again, our whole spiel is to spread love. When somebody leaves our studio, the whole goal is that they spread that to the rest of the community. So for this construction project to happen without a lot of additional thought and process, I think, which has hurt a lot more people than just us standing here, just my business shutting down. So I appreciate the opportunity. I want to echo all of the other business owners, just in an opportunity maybe to halt the project. That would be my personal preference, to stop it altogether. But I do understand that, you know, we need to grow as a community and as a city. So absolutely open to the opportunity to collaborate on that. And again, just thank you for the opportunity to fight for our businesses and to continue to be the community that we absolutely love and adore. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Kelsey.
Next up is Michael Jacob, followed by James Dixon.
Good evening, Council. My name is Michael Jacob, and I'm here tonight with my wife Serena. Serena and I purchased the Lewisville Lash &amp; Company in March of this year. Three years ago, Serena decided to leave her 15-year career in the dental industry to chase her passion, return to school, and become an esthetician. Currently, she works alongside five other estheticians we employ, which all provide services to citizens of Lewisville. As you all, excuse me, as you are all very aware, there is risk associated with opening and running businesses. Serena and I put a second mortgage on our house to be able to finance ours. The purchase of the business from the previous owners included taking over the remainder of an eight-year lease. I'm also sure you are aware it takes time to grow a new business, and right now, we are still very new. Some months we're in the black, sometimes the red, and sometimes we barely break even. Our business provides aesthetic services, which includes soft-touch skin services and lash extension. In addition to these, our estheticians provide medical services that require steady hands and focus. The staff are required to draw blood and perform injections in extremely delicate locations like the face. This is a stressful procedure for both the staff and the clients. Our clientele expects to have a quick, quiet, and peaceful service that is un-uninterrupted by unexpected events, loud noises, and inconveniences. Construction creates the opposite of those expectations and will have a direct impact on our revenue, even if it only affects 10 to 15% of our clientele. It is human nature to try and make every task as efficient and stress-free as possible. This morning, I drove past a gas station that was a few cents cheaper, just because the other one down the road had an easier entrance and exit in the same direction I was headed to on my way to work. Serena and I both understand the need for cities and towns to develop and improve their infrastructure, but it needs to be done in coordination with those that are economically tied to and depend on the people that will be affected by these developments. Had Serena and I known about the planned underpass and closure of South Street, we would not have taken on the risk of purchasing the business in Lewisville. We fear that our business will not survive the impact of the construction and plan development will have, and the impact that plan development will have, which will ultimately have deep and long-lasting consequences on our personal finances. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael.
Next up is James Dixon.
Well, kind of like Justin, I was expecting to come here and really kind of get into you guys with all the facts and why we shouldn't do this or why we should do it elsewhere. I think that's been pretty well-hammered home, thanks to all the businesses and everything like that. I would like to acknowledge that, you know, Kurt and Cameron have been working so hard on this project. You know, we, at Tebow Properties, we own about 300 projects. We do a lot of development, and as we're doing that development, sometimes we reach a point when something's just not right, and, and we do have to pivot, and there's the sunk costs that, that's associated with that. But, you know, when we're looking, as Kurt explained, this is a 50- or 100-year project, it, it has to be right. And it, it can't come at the cost of businesses, it can't come at the cost of closing the road. So I think this is a pivotal point. I know it costs additional design funds, I know it's going to cost additional time, and it's going to put, you know, the grants at more pressure to get this project done. But we have an opportunity here to just slow down, make sure we get it right, and make all the stakeholders, including the community, the businesses, as well as the need for, you know, multimodal transportation, all, you know, hit the right button. So I'll yield the rest of my time, I just wanted to express that.
Then let's take it back to council for, for the comment and, and/or emotion. Yes, Representative Tim.
Yeah, and I, I really appreciate all the parties that are, that are involved in this. I, you know, go through and I think about, you know, staff and the work they put in, you know, council and our, you know, desire to do what's best for our community. And sometimes that is for, you know, individuals, sometimes that's for the greater good. The businesses that have, you know, come here and otherwise operate in that space and, and care so much, and the, and the landowner who cares enough to, to be here and trying to work with the city to make it work, and then just the citizens at large that, you know, maybe aren't in the room and care deeply about all the, all the decisions. So, you know, my hope is that we're doing our best, and I think we are, is to find, you know, find a solution that works for the most people, the best we can. And, you know, I, I did not recuse myself from this conversation, even though I consider Justin to be a, a good friend of mine, because he won't cut me in at all for any of his profits, so I have no financial gain at all. But I care, right? Like, just the fact that we're friends, fine, but I care about these businesses and I care about your experiences. And as a business owner myself, you know, I understand the risks that we all put in to, to try to do something, and it could end up bankrupt, bankrupting us, and that's really scary. And so, you know, this isn't as simple as, as I said to Justin, like, I, I think when we're done, there won't be a better location than all of Lewisville to have a coffee shop, but will it be his? Right? And so that's what we're trying to, you know, deal with here is, you know, what can we do as a council, as a staff, as a community, to make sure it's still Ziggy's that is the one that gets through all this and benefits in the end, and, and it's an amazing place to have a, to have a coffee shop. And I'll just, that goes with all of your, all of your establishments. And what we haven't really talked a lot about is, you know, the underpass to nowhere concept or this, this complaint or this idea, and I just want to at least speak to, you know, the vision. We talk about, oh, it's a 10-year, 20-year, 100-year plan, but Highway 42 from Broomefield to Longmont is getting, not a facelift, a huge upgrade. And that, that's going to benefit the whole corridor, but it's going to be a really miserable process when you redo that road, and it's going to cost hundreds of millions of dollars to do it. This underpass is going to cost, say, $10 million to do, and it's going to be huge disruption. But these are both in hopes of making this corridor much, much better and bringing a commuter train to this location. And the hope is that people are, who want to go to Denver, want to go to Longmont, want to go to Westminster, are going to come to Delo Plaza to catch the train to go. And so they're going to be coming to this location to leave town, and that's good for you guys. And the people that are coming to town, even if I want to come here to go to Lulu's, I'm coming to your Delo Plaza, basically, and then heading out that way. Like, we're trying to make this area 20 years from now just a remarkable location. And the underpass is supposed to go to a north-south commuter bike path that goes from Broomefield to Longmont, and it's supposed to connect us better to Lafayette, both parking and, and trails, so cars and, and bikes and pedestrians, so that Lafayette is using this train station. And we're, and this is a vision for this place that started way before I got on council, and it'll be completed way after I'm gone. And as I joked to Justin, if it all works out 15 years from now, there's not a single human on this planet that's like, nice work, Caleb. That's not what we're here for, right? But I hope that that is, that that comes to fruition 15 years from now. So it's a long speech, and I apologize for that, but, you know, trying to marry those two things together and say, yeah, there's a big city planning thing that a lot of people are working on for decades, and we want it to work. And then there are individuals that are going to potentially be harmed by those short-term actions, and that's a problem. So what can we do to mitigate that? What can we do to avoid that? What can we do to do the best possible version here? And I think that's what we're all aiming for. So there's still a long process in front of us, but I think, not to mention, like, why we want this underpass to nowhere, it is, it is hoped to be a very important connection in the future, that right now, you just look and you're like, what's the point of that? And so that's the big 20-year city planning thing, exercise that we're in. So I thank everybody for their, their part and their role in this, and I take my role very seriously in this, and I appreciate the complexities of this, and I'm, I'm excited to move forward with Option B, sort of whatever that option turns out to be, that that's the direction we're headed, and there are a lot of smart people working on it with a lot of good intention to, to try to get this accomplished. So thanks for humoring me with that long-winded thing.
Yes, Councilmember Erin.
Thank you. So I, I do appreciate everybody who's, who came out, who's here. And I think I met with most of you when, when I learned about this, and a lot of you did. And I want to thank the staff for listening and to us, as well as to all of the direct stakeholders. I know it's a lot of extra work, a lot of extra thinking that's going to go into it, a lot of extra emotion. a lot of extra emotion, and I just wanted you to know that I appreciate that effort, and I don't think that it is, it goes without the appreciation of everybody that's going to be directly impacted with this. I share a lot of Councilmember Dickinson's comments on the concern of the impact of the construction that will be on the current businesses and working as tirelessly as possible to come up with, maybe there's some interesting creative solutions that reduce impact to help keep the businesses open if we don't find a different location for the underpass. And Mayor, I would hope you would entertain a motion to pass Resolution 71, 2025.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Option B, I should specify.
Yeah, yeah. Just to be clear, you're, you're suggesting that we pass Resolution Number 71 Series 2025, a resolution, a provina agreement with Kinley Horn and Associates for the South Street Underpass Project, Option B Design.
That keeps the South Street open to vehicular traffic. Thank you.
Now, we've got a motion and a second? Yes, Councilmember Heffernan.
I just want to briefly thank everyone for coming out. The comments are both well-taken and appreciated, and certainly understand how serious this is. And I know Kurt and his team and everyone else in the city is going to work hard to, you know, if we do end up moving forward after we get through design, minimize construction impacts and do appropriate phasing and sequencing and so on. And, you know, I don't think any of us can promise there will be no impacts, but it's very important to us that we keep them as small and as manageable as possible as this moves forward, and certainly as the highway, the broader Highway 42 project moves forward as well.
Councilmember Vee.
Yeah, I want to reiterate what everyone else has already said. I think it's going to be a great project when it's done, and it is going to serve a very useful purpose for bikes and pedestrians and bringing more customers to the businesses in the Dilo Plaza. I am wondering, with South Street staying open and it only being the underpass for bikes and pedestrians being built, can there be an emphasis on the construction setup, all of the equipment and things, to start on the east side of 42 so that the noise and the dust and all the interference is mostly contained on the opposite side of Highway 42 from the businesses?
Yeah, I mean, what I would say about construction is first, we need to figure out what we need to build. So once we have that, then we'll work with our construction partners to minimize as much as we can. Our businesses are our first priority, as are the residents in that area, but I just can't commit to how we will build it until we have a design, and then we actually talk to the people that are going to build it to determine what is the quickest way to get it built with the least amount of impact on the surrounding area. So that would be my commitment.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. I have a couple of just quick comments. First, safety is critically important. As people know, there are an enormous number of human versus automobile accidents that are unfortunately endemic to Colorado and the rest of the country. This is a trend. It's something that this, the current administration federally is focusing on. It's something that has been focused on by the last administration. It's scary, and everybody knows it. This is an opportunity on what is going to be a wider highway, which is going to have a lot of people, to improve safety. That's a good thing. It's going to, I think, one of the things, and I'm going to continue to sort of beat this drum because it's important and I'm willing to stick my neck out, there is going to be a train. There is. It's already paid for to come through here. The plans are to use the station in Louisville. So it's not a matter of going to the voters. This is a proof of concept here, and with that in mind, there's going to need to be a place for people to park that's over near the ball fields across 42. And to get, there'll be people who need to get from there to the train. Only going to be a kiss-and-ride next to the train. It's not going to be a bunch of parking there. So bear that in mind. And another piece of it is that the Transportation Master Plan has this, serves the purpose of that, and that has been approved by council. So, you know, I think along with the other concerns that have been raised, I, that's kind of the reason for being, and the cost is only going to go up if we don't do something as soon as we can. That said, I care very deeply about the impacts that all of you have raised. They're hugely important. We don't want people to go out of business because of this. Absolutely not. And it's going to be, no matter what we do, nobody's going to be here on council promising that there's not going to be any impact. It's just not going to happen. But we can find ways of dealing with that. We can find ways of improving what is currently being discussed as Version B or Option B. I want to say just, and we're going to listen as we have to this. That's sort of why I wanted to cut through, to get to the meat of what we really need to be getting to. I think that was more or less successful, or I'd like to believe it was successful. So bear with us, but I think we're on a better path. And one final thing, there was a comment about some meetings among stakeholders and city staff that were canceled. Those meetings were canceled because of this meeting, that staff needed direction from us. And so they've got it if we pass the resolution. So I'm sorry for going on, but it's really important, I think, to say all those things, and it's very important, maybe more important than anything, that we listen to the people in Louisville and the concerns that they have. We've listened, we will. We're going to continue to do that and listen to the businesses. That's essential to what we're doing here. So that said, is there any other comment? Nope. Yes? Well, I'm not coaxing it out of you. I'm just asking.
Yeah. Just wanted to say, you know, I came into this meeting, you know, being a little bit unsure about which option I might support, you know, but, you know, there were a few questions that I really wanted to get answered, and, you know, from reading the packet and asking some questions before, I still had those concerns coming into the meeting. But, you know, from what I heard from staff, really led me to move towards Option B. You know, in particular, I think staff allayed some concerns I had about the possible considerably larger budget, and then also just not, sort of the non-viability of some options that, you know, could try to preserve aspects of what we have, but still go for Option A. So, yeah, so I wanted to come in with an open mind, and I do think that Option B is the best way to go tonight. And I just want to reiterate, well, or just say that I agree with what my fellow council members have said. So thank you all for coming and for providing feedback.
Okay. It's a resolution, so we just need a voice vote. All in favor of motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Before we take the final item, I'll take one more moment of personal privilege. My, well, there's no need to say anything, except I had a daughter that encouraged me to go on a hike today at midday, or it ended up extending to midday, and I'm pretty dehydrated, so, and I probably should have turned this meeting over to my Mayor Protem. So, but you could have, and I appreciate the indulgence of the staff and the council and, most of all, the public tonight. So thank you again. All right, let's go to Item D, Ordinance Number 1903, Series 2025, an ordinance amending Title 17, Louisville Municipal Code Concerning Distance Restriction for Natural Medicine Businesses in the City of Louisville. It's the first reading to set public hearing. Tonight, we're going to be hearing staff report for this ordinance. We will not be opening the public hearing or taking public comment. Council may ask questions, suggest amendments for second reading, or instruct staff to return with additional information. It is possible that the council could vote the thing down and not send it on. All right, so the floor is staff for report.
Thank you, Mayor, councilors. Good evening. Matt Post, Senior Planner.
I'm so sorry, Matt. Can you just wait one minute, because I actually can't even hear? So if we can, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Matt Post, Senior Planner, Community Development. That affords you tonight is the first reading of Ordinance 1903, amending Title 17 of the Municipal Code to update the method of measuring required separation distances between natural medicine businesses and schools and childcare facilities. This ordinance is before you tonight at the request of council. I apologize if this took so long to get in front of you, but hopefully, we can get this pushed through. Just as a quick reminder, in November of 2022, Colorado voters approved Proposition 122, which along with Senate Bill 23290, decriminalized the possession, cultivation, sharing, and use of psilocybin and other related substances. The new state law designated psilocybin and those related substances as natural medicine. The state law paved the way for the establishment of natural medicine businesses and required that local jurisdictions allow them. While we are restricted from prohibiting those uses, if you recall, we are allowed to regulate their time, place, and manner. Natural medicine businesses include natural medicine healing centers where natural medicine is administered in a supervised and clinical setting, and it also includes facilities for the cultivation, manufacturing, and testing of natural medicine. All of these businesses are referred to, or all of these uses, rather, are referred to as natural medicine businesses collectively. And so in December of 2024, the City Council adopted Ordinance 1887, which permitted natural medicine businesses throughout the city of Louisville. Moving on to the proposal, again, I think, as you all recall, the state law includes provision requiring that natural medicine businesses, or natural medicine services is actually the language in the state law, that those services be conducted in a building that is located at least 1,000 feet from licensed childcare facilities and schools. The law specifies that that distance is to be measured as a direct line from the nearest property line of the school or childcare facility to the nearest portion of the building or unit where the natural medicine service is taking place. It is important to note, however, that the law also allows local jurisdictions to vary those distances, provided that any variation does not in reasonably restrict the establishment of natural medicine businesses. The City Council at the time elected to adopt a property line-to-property line buffer measurement as opposed to the direct pedestrian route. In preparing the original staff recommendations, I think staff emphasized that the property line-to-property line approach would be easier to administer for staff, potentially easier for business owners, but then also would ensure that natural medicine use restrictions are in place for commercial centers where schools and childcare facilities are most heavily located and most dense in the city. But again, based on the direction that we've received, we're presenting this amendment tonight that would update the method of measurement for separation requirements, and it would adopt the direct pedestrian route method. This approach would measure the distance, again, from the property line of a school or childcare facility to the closest portion of the building or unit where the natural medicine use is taking place. So existing is property line-to-property line proposed is the direct pedestrian route measurement. So on the screen here is the proposed language, so I'll just read through this quickly. So no natural medicine business may be located within 1,000 feet of, we know, schools and childcare facilities. The existing language right now is that the distance shall be measured, I'm sorry, shall be determined by a direct measurement from the nearest property line of the land, the school, the land use containing the school, to the nearest property line of the site containing the natural medicine business. That language has been updated to state that the distance shall be calculated by measuring the most direct pedestrian route from the nearest property line of the land use to the nearest portion of the building or unit where the natural medicine business use will be located. And then we added this last section here just to ensure that we were able to reasonably determine what a safe pedestrian route is, and that language says the measurement shall reflect a safe and lawful walking path without trespassing or use of alleys, and shall follow designated pedestrian routes and include right-angle crossings while observing all traffic signals and traffic regulations. So this is the new language as proposed. I wanted to include just a depiction of the original buffer map that we had shown for the existing language here. Obviously, it was easy to show this as an informative graphic for where natural medicine businesses would be prohibited based on existing schools and licensed childcare facilities. This map is probably outdated. I didn't run a new buffer forward. I pulled this from the old one, but again, this is simply reflective of the original buffer that we adopted, which was the property line-to-property line measurement. I wasn't able to generate a new map. I'm sure, as you can imagine, there are multiple pedestrian routes that any potential use that's established could take to a school. So instead, we took an example here. This is an example, an aerial from a neighboring community. I didn't want to use a Louisville community and potentially call out a potential business that wouldn't necessarily be establishing a natural medicine use, but as you can see, highlighted in blue would be a school and the boundary of that school location. What's highlighted in yellow would be a potential lot or property where a natural medicine business use may be located. What's in red would be the method of measurement that we have currently adopted, which is a property line-to-property line measurement, and you can see that the shown measurement is 240 feet. Under the administration of our current ordinance, a natural medicine business would not be permitted at this property that's shown in yellow. With the update, using the most reasonable pedestrian route that you can see is highlighted in green, that buffer distance turns to 1,246 feet. A natural medicine business would now be permitted at that particular location. I chose this particular graphic because there's actually an alley that you can see. This is the city of Lafayette, but there's an alley that's also present here. And again, based on our language, we would not allow the pedestrian route to be calculated by an alley, so it's using sidewalks, right-angle crossings, and the measurement is taken to the nearest point of the building where the natural medicine business is taking place. So this is an example of how the new method of measurement may play out as opposed to the property line-to-property line that's currently adopted. And so just some quick analysis here. I think based on the updated method of measurement, staff anticipate that this change will primarily affect natural medicine healing centers. Those are the uses where natural medicine is administered in that clinical setting. And again, that's just based on the fact that the districts where natural medicine healing centers are permitted are also some of the areas in town where we see the most childcare facilities and schools. Other areas that, or I'm sorry, other uses that are considered for impacts would be cultivation, manufacturing, and testing. Of course, those are only permitted in industrial districts, so we don't anticipate a significant impact on those particular use types within the natural medicine business category. So areas of town that we anticipate may now be eligible to establish natural medicine businesses or natural medicine healing centers specifically would be downtown Louisville. If you recall, just from our buffer map here, based on the existing buffers, downtown Louisville was fully excluded from being able to establish a natural medicine healing center use. Again, just based on the buffer map, and that may change with the new pedestrian route. So we anticipate, again, potentially natural medicine healing centers to be established in downtown Louisville now, and Centennial Valley, as well as some areas in Centennial Valley and along the McAslin Corridor where those existing buffers would have prohibited their location. That concludes staff's presentation at this point. The Planning Commission did just hear this last week and recommended approval of this order. ordinance moving forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you very much. Are there council questions? Yes. Councilmember Kern, then.
Thank you. So it mentions, and thank you for bringing this back and working on it. I remember the particular concern in case, I think, that was something in our Old Town area. I am concerned about excluding alleys from people, like, because we are talking about the safety of our children, and our children are going to walk in alleys, and somebody who might be trying to come to them is going to be walking in an alley. But I just wanted to make sure that trails, you know, like a designated path that's through a school to access a sidewalk, that that's part of these considered, you know, I guess it's not going to be through a school property because you're at the very edge of it. But the example that you gave in Lafayette, for example, I would be concerned with using this language and saying that that wasn't a path that somebody would use to get there, because I think that they would in an alley. But it was, but this will not exclude trails? Is that correct?
Yeah, this wouldn't exclude trails specifically. You know, I think, and to address your question about alleys, you know, we looked at some other jurisdictions that have adopted similar language. I think we just wanted to ensure a reasonable method with which we could establish a direct pedestrian route. And obviously, alleys are maybe not the most comfortable pedestrian way for folks to actually utilize. Obviously, people use them on a daily basis. But we felt it appropriate to exclude the use of alleys when we were calculating the direct pedestrian measurement, because pedestrian sidewalks are the more common and safe form of pedestrian transportation, and it provides direct access to those right-angle crossings and crosswalks, which would allow for, again, just ensuring safe pedestrian route and travel, and then observation of traffic regulations as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I appreciate the work, and I support this generally. And so if you bring up the Lafayette map, just trying to understand, you obviously have some sort of, you know, way of terming this when an application comes in, the application is the yellow box, you're looking at the green school, you've picked the northwest corner because that is the closest spot to get to the yellow. You haven't picked the front door of the school, for instance. You know, you've picked an exit point that is actually, so I can imagine if I was the yellow businessman, like, nobody leaves the school from there. What are you talking about? If you're going to exclude the alley, shouldn't it be from the front door or natural exit points? So you have a way of establishing the language where this isn't a debate, where staff is determining, there's some calculation here that's not arguable when determining the exit point from the school, just like the entrance point to the building. I can see the green line ends at the start, not the front door of the building, the start of the building, not the parking lot. Right, so those rules, so is that clear as day when you're evaluating a permit or a license?
Yeah. Yeah, I think we feel this is the most appropriate way to administer the pedestrian route. It also aligns with state language, brings us into alignment with state language, which indicates that the measurement is taken from the property line of the school to the nearest point of the building. Again, we added that additional pedestrian route language in there, but I think, obviously, we'll default to the shorter route that's available. For example, we wouldn't take it right to the right and then up, because that would just artificially inflate the overall distance. So I think just by default, we'll utilize the shortest distance that's available as well.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Any proposed amendments or other comments tonight? We can obviously do that at the meeting, but that is permitted under our ordinances. And so if anybody has anything.
I move that Ordinance Number 1903, Series 2025, pass on first reading, and the public hearing be set for Monday, November 3, 2025, at 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Let's see. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Attorney's Report is next.
I have no report. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. There's, next item is Identification of Future Agenda Items. Does anybody have an agenda item that they would like to propose? Yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
We keep receiving emails about e-bikes, and I keep hearing from constituents about e-bikes. And so I think on the draft work plan that staff sent out, there was a placeholder for possibly more discussion or consideration of e-bike policy, and I am wondering if maybe we should think about moving that forward to a closer date.
Just to clarify, are you suggesting that we deal with it in the work plan discussion, or are you suggesting we put it as an agenda item on a council meeting?
Sorry.
On its own, you know?
Yeah. I guess I'm suggesting that we consider putting it on an agenda as an item.
That's an item. Let's take a quick straw vote on that, about whether we want to put that on the agenda. Yes, no? Let's talk about the thumbs up. People in.
Well, I would comment that I definitely think it's something we need to continue to talk about. I think this is a high-priority safety issue for our community. I think the right place to talk about it is in our work plan adjustment to say, "Yeah, let's put this on an agenda," but I'm not comfortable, like, in this meeting right now determining what it cuts in front of or not. But I support your interest in moving it up on the calendar, and so I think we should talk about when we're looking at our advanced agenda and other things that, if we can get this back faster, but I'm not prepared to, like, place it on an agenda tonight.
Comfortable with that?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
All right. We'll make sure it gets on the, as an item that we talked about in the work plan. All right. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Great. Thank you all.